Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Shifrin and I'm chairman of the planning board. Calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM on August 14th, 2021. Meeting is being recorded. Could we have a roll call, please? Laura Shifrin, present. I do not see anyone else from the board. Get the little noisy thing that click on together. Always over there, please. Thank you. And this one, okay. So we have called to order. Will you all join me in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For joining me, I want to thank all of our veterans, our current military, and all of our first responders. 1.3, additions or additions to the agenda. I don't have any additions or additions. I will have a comment under the September meetings, okay? So make sure to go over that. 1.4, approval of minutes of July 24th, 2023. Any additions or additions? The only comment I have is that the recording was startled and completely difficult for you to follow. You know, I thought that it was, so hopefully, Pat reset and you have that under control. 1.5, administrator's report, which sent this. So we're trying to prepare the administrative reports for the boards now. Everything you were doing, I think I mentioned that I said. I just want to let board know that I signed up on two building permit, interdepartmental signatures, 19 Crescent Bridge Road and 18 Shirley Road. And under referrals completed for the Pittsburgh Road, major restricted development application. There is an official referral received from the Land use for either on revised plan. On provided, shelter provided comments. The project's minor stormwater management permit is already, actually, I'm updating my own report, but the minor stormwater management permit review had, report has come back very favorably. So that permit will be issued tomorrow. That's a minor, so that's not issued by the board. Application, 66 Bayberry Hill Road. The planning board has a major stormwater management permit application under review. The public hearing is scheduled for August 28th. A peer review work order is pending from our consultants. I haven't got it back yet. I'm going to give them a day or two because they just got back from vacation. And the NOI has been approved by the conservation commission for this project already. Far as site visits and compliance. When you staff visited 27 Scales Lane to check, inspect upon their request for certificate of completion of that stormwater permit issued in 2019 to the whole project. But we did visit the site on August 3rd. There were deviations noted from the approved plan and need for erosion and sedimentation control work at the site. A letter was issued by the state to the site owner and engineer outlining the inconsistency. And we're awaiting response from the owner. As far as 2 Main Street goes, the owner's engineer provided a letter to the planning board with an update on the status of the mass DOT application for curb cut and compliance condition B of that special permit. Experiences and grant date, private ZDA for the handicap parking space and proof of recording has been received. A letter from draft will be mailed to the all around requesting attendance at the August 28th planning board meeting for a project status update and review of construction timelines. Stormwater, I mean, just a mask. Especially if I'm out there too, but 22 Main Street. That's right, that's Mary's Hospital. Yeah. The, when you say, the owner's engineer provided the letters that been updated. He gave you a copy of the letter that was sent to Bethany Scott? No, he provided a letter that, I have it right here. Basically, he states that the last year two application. They're working on comments that were from last year. Oh, okay. So there, it's in process. It hasn't been updated. That was really my question, like, so he, he, they made an application and they have written a response to him and they're acting on the response. Exactly, yeah, yeah. So that is in process and that update was part of the special permit condition. Those are others. Okay, so stormwater. The, we have monthly inspection reports from Campbell Farm, open space preservation development, and Harbor Trace Water Treatment Plant. We have construction scheduled for the stormwater management system update for Harbor Trace. Also, oh, just so you know, the construction on the stormwater system. And the water treatment plant is planning, it should begin on August 28th. So that's their schedule, yes, construction, you know how that goes. They had, they had the roofing cutting for that, right? Right, so the stormwater management system goes in winter. You know, it works in their timeline in terms of how another construction is set up. We, we'll do another inspection once they start constructing that system. And stormwater site inspections are planned for later this week as well, some of the other sites. The miscellaneous. So this is in general, we offer, I think Robert is, but he's been taking advantage of this. The offer is extended to all planning board members to come into Land Use Office and review meeting materials before meetings. Staff have assisted members with questions and information on projects under the board's review during the sessions. And the second pick is Allison Whisney, who has formally accepted the offer for the housing and branch administrator position. She'll be joining us in the Land Use Department within a few weeks. The town clerk issued a bulletin notice.
Sorry.
The town clerk issued a bulletin notice that the amendments to the Townsend zoning by law 14542, the site plan review, special permit, have been approved by the attorney general's office and is now certified and code for the town of Townsend. And so a review of the planning board application and service fee schedule will be conducted by staff this month at the request of the town administrator. We're going to go back and take another look at that. And the fee schedule will be formed and raised into a table, as we talked about, for publication and certification. And lastly, Townsend Fair Free Mart Shuttle Bus Service is running in Town Hall, the Pittsburgh Intermodal. Please, I forgot the word. Thank you. Well, thank you for your report, staff. And then, under one, building permit, interdepartmental signatures. So 19 Crescent Bridge Road was a permit for what? I've been wondering, was it building permit? And you know what? Yeah, a lot of them, so in a lot of times they're for pools or, or. Oh, I see. Unrelated, but what I do is if I see an address that I know the board has had an application on, I'll upload the special permit into the system. So I'm just sort of like browsing at this point and then. Okay. If there's something that I see you have worked on, I'll upload it. So we're compiling the database now. Okay, so Cap, Cap is working with? 19 Crescent Bridge? No, but the ZDA did issue, I believe, a special permit for an accessory department there years ago. Okay, yeah. And 18 Shirley was a permit that was withdrawn? Or, to be honest with you, I went back and looked in the system and I couldn't find anything filed under it. So it could have been, yeah. Because, I'm just wondering if it's, if it's going to be reported, like what was? Yeah, what was the project? Okay, so a lot of these are, yeah, just building projects, like pools and things like that. I can make sure that I add that to the next report. Thank you. Okay, so. So we have a few minutes before 6:45. Jazz, welcome.
Thank you.
While we have a minute, a question came up about the bylaw committee. Since there's a bylaw, what is the anticipation results of the bylaw committee that you're looking for? In other words, would planning boards still be looking at the bylaws that we're working on? You know, as a planning board? Are you getting people from all the departments to serve on a bylaw committee with what outcome?
Well, the, once we form the committee, then the committee will come up with those answers in regards to that. There has been interest in it and I think the Board of Selectment is going to be discussing it at our next meeting on the 22nd. So there's a couple of, I mean, if you look at the charter, the charter says that we have to formulate a bylaw committee and that, in the charter will give you the answers to those questions on what it is. We're, we're thinking that they need to task what is zoning bylaws and what is general bylaws? And once they split those up, then you guys can decide who needs to be on what or how it needs to be formulated or whatever. But we just want to get the committee set up so that they can start making those, those decisions.
So currently, there are bylaws that just go under zoning? And mostly, all the other bylaws are under the planning board?
The general bylaw, yes.
Yes. General bylaw, it's under the planning board, okay.
Right. So it, the committee, for instance, to answer your question a little more, more specifically. If there is a bylaw that the committee thinks that it's just the planning board that needs to work on it, then they can, they can suggest that the, the planning board gives their input on it or whatever. But the committee itself is just looking at all of the bylaws and saying what needs to be updated, what needs to be upgraded, and then everybody will be working on it, wouldn't be just that committee.
So they're just going to get their opinion of what needs to be worked on and then recommend who should be working on it?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Jazz. Well, okay, we'll see, we'll see what happens. So we're almost there and. Yeah. All right, so I'm just gonna do that. And we're at 6:45. Okay. I'd like to call the public hearing to order at 6:45 for 96 Pittsburgh Road, 10234. Major restricted development site plan review, special permit on August 14th, 2021. Like the, many board members to introduce themselves. Paris Hoxsey is present.
Harbor Terry is present.
Laura Shifrin is present. I don't see Tony online.
Tony Lopez is present.
Oh, hi.
How are you? Hey, Beth, I'm here.
Okay, is there a way, as a voting member, I need to have you visible?
I can do that when it comes to a vote, yes, I can.
Okay. All right, I do that. There is a public side sheet and has everyone done that? Okay. Okay, so now if the applicant wants to, would you give us a update?
Certainly. Beth, would you mind sharing the image of sheet one? Kind of silvered as a front part in there. At our last meeting, I'm sorry, Bruce Ringwald, Bill Smith, Preston Ringwald, and with me is Scott Taker. At our last meeting, there was a question to clarify the parking spaces. So we modified the plan to highlight the parking spaces. I can't have the guy show on the plan. My recital board.
Yeah, please.
So in front of the unit A, we have highlighted the parking space one and I'm going to give you, open this plan here and share this one because we made a slight modification to that. In front of unit one, there's parking space. In front of unit B, there's a parking space. In front of unit C, there's a parking space. This area here is a turnaround area and a parking space. The, by your bylaw, your bylaw calls for 200 square feet. We have this particular area 18 feet deep. And so it's 11 and a quarter feet wide, so it meets that 200 square foot zone. And then we have an eight foot wide by 18 feet deep space adjacent to that, which will be the back out and turning space here for the resident at unit A. But these are all handcrafted. Okay. They're, they all meet in ADA requirements because that is required under the project that ADA requirements. So they all meet ADA requirements. The, and all these ramps up to the front doors, it's all zero step. It's all meets ADA requirements. Beth and I spoke and she's made a condition or added a condition and should you guys vote to approve this, to have a sign added in front here that this is the guest parking? And that we delineate a line on the pavement surface here to separate the guest parking from the turnaround. I agree with the sign, the line on the pavement, I think it's a little overkill, which is only three units. If the three of us are in those three units, we're going to have communication together and people will know that our guests needs to park up close to the building so that they can back into there. Six one half dozen, it's a little bit of paint, we can add it. I'm just not a big sign person myself.
Okay.
So that's, that's that. We also added planting. We added planting in here where we added two flowering dogwoods on either end and a, I'm trying to remember what I put in the middle here. Plant list. It was back. Flowering dogwoods and there's a room, that's not right, there's a room that's over here. And, oh yeah, he's right, but. And then I have a series of shrubs, foundation plantings in front of the buildings. There was some discussion last meeting with the butter, are you the butter?
I am.
Right, right, on Bruce, I just made you, I couldn't see you in the last meeting. There's some discussion over here, looking at, at the vegetation that's in here. There are some evergreens that are mixed in amongst the deciduous. We added a note here that the existing deciduous and evergreen vegetation remain were feasible. So that kind of bumps out into here. It's, when we do the survey, we don't locate each individual tree. So we had to have a trunk line. So this is kind of a trunk line whereby the drip line would be coming out much further. Vegetation sticks out further into the property. We have two windows on this side of the building. They're on either side of the chimney. So if you were to look at the floor plans, this is the kitchen area and this is the living area. And there's a chimney here, so there's a window on either side. What Scott and I have talked about is that we might make those windows smaller windows because we don't want, from the same reason, he doesn't want people paring in, we don't want people paring in. It's the north side of the building, so it's letting some natural light in, but it's not letting, you know, the sun. We're not getting early morning sun and the evening sun coming in. So it's, we might just make those as, you know, higher case windows rather than the typical, you know, window that you have in your space. Once we get in there and we do the clearing, Scott is willing to work with you on doing some landscaping in here because we're going to, I want to have some privacy between each property. And on the deck in the back, one of the things that we've talked about is having like privacy screening on the edge of the deck itself. So that if that was my unit and I'm sitting out there, I have a privacy screen from one place to the other. So those are easy and simple things to do. So those are the changes that we added to the plan on the, on the site. Adding the vegetation around that we talked about in that little bit. And I think that was it for the requested changes from the last meeting. So I guess for any other questions you might have. Where's the dumpster? There is no dumpster, as we spoke last time, they'll be using the personal totes. You know, the driver's totes that you have and everybody keeps in their garage and then they wheel them out by the side of the road in the morning to pick up and back in the house, just like other folks.
Mine's.
There you go. It's not, it's not a big development, maybe worthy of having a dumpster and another section of infervious surface and everything else.
Was there a question about the bombs that that gets rid of? Both bombs?
Need to talk about benchmarks.
Oh, the benchmarks. So we have a, we have two benchmarks shown right now, one in a tree here, 36 inch pine, and another utility pole here. And we will. Before construction, we'll replace this one with some other known structure on the site once we see what's staying and what isn't. It may be, may be actual stake with a hub intact. It may be on another tree that stays along the side. But we'll be out to lay out the property and set additional benchmarks as necessary. And we, but we, we have another one right here. We have one on the building next door, but that's not there. All these benchmarks, as it states on, on the front page, are based on, oops, excuse me. It's there, I almost tripped it on my foot. All the benchmarks are based on NAVG 1988, which is the National Vertical Datum of 1988. Our survey crew's all learning off the GPS, so they have set up on that datum. So every time we're setting up, we're at that setup. So we'll be able to reset any benchmark on the property. It's not like it's assumed datum and if we take down the tree, we have no idea what the grades are that we use on the property. It's map and geographic down that's used.
I suppose it's okay. It's pretty unconventional.
Very conventional. This is, this is the way it's done. When I, when I'm out on the property initially, when I have survey crew out, I'm not out there. When I, my survey crews out on the property initially, they don't know what's going to be happening on the site. So they pick a couple of points to set benchmarks at. Usually a utility pole and a hydrant, you don't have a hydrant right in front. We do have a utility pole right here and then they set on a tree or two around. This property did not have that many trees, as you can see up in here by where we're going to do the work. So they picked an area that was near our soil testing because on a subject plan, you have to have a benchmark within 75 feet. So they had it relatively close to where the soil testing was. We'll just reset a new one. It's very simple to do.
You know, any other questions I asked from the last page for ostrich? Which one of the swales, the drainage alongside the stone wall, such you guys have all set in the eight feet. Relatively close to the stone wall.
Yep.
It's going to push much of that stormwater into that small section. I just want to make sure that it's not going to come.
Okay, so as you can see here on the plan, the existing contours come up and they follow right along the wall. So they take a kind of turn and they head along here. So that's, if you're at the wall, the ground slopes down to the site right now. And then we're going to have a level spot and then it'll slope up again. And so the water will come down and it'll hit that valley and then it'll flow down.
As long as it keeps going down that way, I'm fine. I just, I don't want it in my basement or in my apartment. I'm having trouble with the plot later. I don't see any block dimensions or. I'll just take it turned on. Because they were on first round that you got. Let me see if we're in. They were certainly on first option today.
Well, right up here. On the locust, all of the mentions are on the locust plan. And they make reference here to.
I didn't see.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
And then they make reference right here to the A and R plan that was recently endorsed by this board. Want to say last winter, as you say, I'm here. January, January 11th, the board had an A and R plan, people were in books.
Okay.
So, no problems. I knew they were there, it just threw me for a loop because I expected to see the right front of me.
So the building itself is 30 feet from the edge of the property?
No, this is, this is a 50 foot setback to the building line from the edge of the road. This is 50 foot here and 30 foot to the sideline lines.
Okay.
So we're close here on the 30 foot on that corner and then it moves away. We're close on that 30 foot and then it moves away and then we're very close on the 50 foot. So we'll no doubt stake for the foundation hole. And then Scott will have us back to pin the footing, say in the hole so that we build the building where it's supposed to be and it doesn't have any conflicts with the setbacks.
That was your question.
Okay, thank you, Robert. I always appreciate your engineering support. Carol?
Nothing specific. I guess for Brian as the butter, are you relatively satisfied with the effort made?
I mean, if, if. The building is built and I'm staring at somebody's windows and later I say, could you guys put up a privacy fence?
We'll work with, we'll work with vegetation. I mean, it's going to, it's going to go both ways. It's going to go both ways. And so there is some evergreenage here, where there, and there's some deciduous in there. Also, this site is going to be sitting up a little bit higher than your site is. You can follow the topography down and we've got to come in level because of everything. So essentially, our first floor is going to be probably looking at your second floor. And if I remember right, you're a cape, so there's like a window on the end makes. Yeah, so I think we're going to be pretty good. And your building sits back a little bit. These two windows be front and small up above, so I think we'll be in good shape.
So the backside driveway comes here, five buildings, right about.
Yeah.
How far?
Right away, this is right.
Well, this, this is my property.
I know.
Up for two carlets. Two carlets.
Two, 20, 20, 20.
And any idea of the height of the trees?
Oh, there's all.
The trees?
Yeah.
Lots of trees.
There are trees all.
And which trees most?
It's a mix.
Yeah. It's combination of sars brass, the 36 inch white pine. There's another smaller, there's an apple tree in there.
Yep.
It's, it's a mixture. But it's all, it's all wood stuff. Because the donkey's never got anything down.
I personally have no other comments on this. I think, you know, applicant and the butter have been relatively respectful and hopefully that continues throughout.
Absolutely.
You know, create efforts.
Madam Chair?
And who's that?
Jessica. Hi, Jessica Funnyole, co-owner. I ask you guys to check the Board of Health regulations as it's 232 bags per house or 164 gallon per house. And if it's going to be unit A, B, and C, I do not know whether they will differentiate between, you know, each unit has two bags or if they're still going to require the bag limit. So I think that we need to look into that a little bit more. So I think that we need to look into that a little bit more, because he seems to just be pressing it off as you don't need a dumpster. But I think that you should definitely look into that again.
So typically, per house means per household? And this is a multi-family home? So each unit is considered a household?
Jessica, standing, there's another three family in West Townsend, and they each are put out their two barrels, recycle and trash kind of thing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm not the expert, I'm just saying that's what's going on.
And the other question that I have, with, with the way that your parking is situated, I don't know, you guys have been on Route thirteen recently. The traffic that goes through there is moving fast. I, I'm worried that when somebody parked in that guest parking spot, backing out of that area or getting out of that.
There would be nobody backing out onto the road. This will all be set up so that you can back out. Both of these units will be able to back out like this.
Okay.
And then drive, and this unit will be able to back out like this and then drive. This is, this is, this is nineteen feet wide. If we can't put two cars at nineteen feet.
Then they have a challenge with driving. The, um, snow removal in that area, is that going to impact that?
No.
Okay. That, I, I.
The only concern I have being that close to the parking, but they should be like, they're off.
Well, again, the building is fifty feet off, which is, which is in I love, in private or building. So they're fifty feet off the road, and have at least a fifty-foot driveway going out. You know, so, um, and I, and from a sale point of view, obviously, somebody who's going to buy that end unit doesn't want to look at your house either.
Right.
Or your bedroom, it doesn't want to be looked at. So, so I'm sure they're going to make it as saleable as possible, you know, to appease the buyer. So. Any other questions? Uh, Tony, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions, actually. No, it looks, the plan looks like it meets everything that they've been talking about. That's how they're trying to, trying to get it built here, so it looks good to me.
Okay. Um, so if we've gone through your presentation, questions from the board, and questions from the butters. So the last thing I think we have on this, before we look at the grant decision, from Conservation Agency. I'm going to put it here. Ready to put it in? Yeah. Oh, menus coordinator, sorry. I saw the titles that are floating around, something used to be one person. So, um, there was a letter written to the Conservation Commission, and the answer is in an email, so I'm going to read the email. And I'm not sure that this is the holy name. And I'm just going to read the special condition inspections.
Yeah.
All right, this is from the menus coordinator. All invasive plant material encountered needs to be removed from the project site and properly disposed of. Special condition to address the police comment is a great idea. Pre-construction meeting, E and S inspection with the project team, the question mark, I'm not sure what she means by that. Side work is to be done in conjunction with the minor stormwater permit. Encroachment into the land beyond the situation barrier limit of work and into the hundred-foot wetland buffer will require approval from the town and the Conservation Commission. And that's all, and it's been done, right? Yeah, and that's all you have to mean. Okay. Okay. All right, we have a quick, yeah, okay.
We, we would just like to clarify, by May, that, um, relative to the invasive plant material, uh, on the pro, project plans, we showed the erosion segmentation control, which she speaks of further on down. Um, we showed it at the edge of the hundred-foot buffer and then coming across the property outside of the hundred-foot buffer. That's the only area that we plan to do any disturbance on the site. So we don't plan to do any disturbance within the hundred-foot buffer. Uh, therefore, we should not have to go to the Conservation Commission, other than our filing of the minor stormwater approval, which was approved today.
Okay. Thank you.
So what's considered invasive plants?
Don't miss, we have a long list.
The Massachusetts D and P has a whole list out of plants, things that you and I loved planting years ago, like, uh, eumonimus fern bush, it had to turn beautiful red in the fall. That's an invasive plant now, so you can't, can't buy that plant there.
Wisteria.
Barbary is a, uh, a basic barberry, or Japanese barberry is an invasive plant. Um, bamboo is an invasive plant. Uh, Japanese or non-native bittersweet is an invasive plant. And there's a bunch of that on the property. So there are things that are on the property that we'll be taking out, you know, we do the work at the site. Um, but as far as going back beyond that, um, if there's anything we wish to do, we'll be in touch with Matt and with the commission prior to doing any work like that.
Good stuff.
You know, maybe, that's for sure.
Okay, so Beth has prepared a grant decision for us, which we did receive, and it does need some edits, more administrative than anything else. So my attempt is to go to the conditions on the grant. A lot of the grant is probably the paint plate, so just make sure. And before we have a sign, we will definitely have, you know, an edited copy. So, under the conditions, none of them being A, the open open space shall be contiguous and usable by residents and other development. Permanent conservation restriction running to or enforceable by the town shall be recorded for the common open space and shall include restrictions that the land be maintained in perpetuity for conservation or passive recreation. The conservation construction shall be completed by one year from the date of the approval of the decision herein, and the applicant shall file with the planning board a certificate stating the date the approved conservation restriction was recorded and book and page numbers within seven days of recording.
So, I have a quick question on that.
Look at that. There's a question about this.
Fair enough. I was asking you for permission to ask the question. No, look at that.
And Tom, that's what we review this year. We have nice stuff.
Okay, so I, I understand the open space wanting to be in perpetuity, and the best and easiest way is with a conservation restriction. The issues with the conservation restriction is, is there, um, they need to have somebody to hold the conservation restriction, and you stayed in here to have that be held by the town. I think it says, uh, conservation restriction retained in perpetuity, conservation restrictions should be completed one year, to say who is going to be done, uh, running to or enforceable by the town. So that means that the town will be the responsible entity for that, and we will set that up for the town to need that. That one-year timeframe is only going to be acceptable if the town can get response back and forth, because the, not the EP, the Executive Office of Community Development, which has to sign off on a conservation restriction after the town and the cons, after the town's Conservation Commission and the town's Board of Selectment, they have to sign off. All that, in my experience, takes usually more than a year.
Okay. So maybe, uh, maybe we refer it to, at one year, just updating us of that?
There you go.
Yeah.
Updates on the process for, uh, one year from certificate of occupancy, because we can get it started, you know, soon, but it takes a while for that to happen.
So I don't know if they can get certificate of occupancy without it.
I don't, no, I, I don't think it should be like certificate of.
No, 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 I don't want it to be tied to the occupancy, because I know for a fact, um, like, I just did, uh, it's under construction right now, that, uh, that age restricted development in Donald Willard, and they're still going back and forth on the conservation restriction, and that thing's been under construction for two years. It's a huge development, big, much larger development than this, but it's been, so this, this been going back and forth. And that one is set up to have the conservation restriction in that, in place prior to the last two units. But there's, there's like three dozen units, so it's a, it's a different situation. I don't think it should be tied to the occupancy at all, because if Scott can put this thing together, we want to be able to get him in there. So if you can set a timeframe that's out a couple of years, then, you know, that's something that we can live with, but we don't want to be, I, have, have the three of us looking divided, move in there, and we can't move in because the state can't figure out, get a signature out of form.
Okay, yeah. Can we get some input from Jessica? How would that should online?
Uh, I think it's, it's why it's online.
Yeah. Oh, oh, Jessica.
Hi. I'm here. Um, yeah, good points. I mean, I, I threw out the one-year turnaround time there, but I, I think, I mean, if this is a decision that's valid for, are we going to go with two years? I mean, I think that, that's a feasible time as well. Um, yeah, I mean, I think we're, we're all willing to work. This is a really good development, so of course, we're going to be present to push this forward.
I think we should get status reports.
Well, you have status reports, because Jessica or who remember, Jessica or Matt are going to be reviewing it, I'm sure Beth will as well.
Okay.
Um, and then the last question I have relative to that is, I'm going to make the assumption that that open space is the open space that we're required to have, so it's, it's essentially from, you know, this line on back, and it doesn't have an impact on the immediate area around the building, because the immediate area around the building is areas that they're going to want to have a garden, have a subfic.
That's common to the owners.
That's common to the owners, and this is common open space for the balance of.
Right. Is that what was in everybody's understanding, Jessica? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay.
All right, good. Just wanted to clarify a little stuff.
Right. Maybe this makes sense to me. So maybe in that condition, we're going to, to that extent. Yeah. Okay. Open space is going to be there. So B, the applicant shall provide signage for the guest parking space and provide line spacing, uh, the space to provide adequate area for vehicles to turn. No stop sign of snow or other materials shall be permitted in the guest space or turn room space. All right. C, prior to construction and once administrative approvals are complete, the applicant shall contact the land use department for pre-construction meeting. The applicant shall file a construction schedule with the planning board at this meeting. This is, this one's, I think, oil applied, right? That's the oil applied one? No. See? Not. Okay. Is the board good with that? Makes sense, but. Is the board good with that? That's experience. Yeah. Okay. D, all invasive plant material encountered needs to be removed from the project site and properly disposed of. All planted, shown on the site plan, shall be maintained by the applicant in perpetuity. Um, do we need to add the, um, within the one hundred foot? Yeah, or within the erosion control area? Okay, does that work?
Yeah, within, within the project plan.
Okay.
I have a question on that.
Say it was open ended.
Um, these are going to be sold as cover minutes, correct?
That's right.
Yeah. So how do we, Aaron, keep the perpetuality of that to maintain?
Well, what's in perpetuity is common. What's in perpetuity is common.
So that would require the association.
Correct. So they're going to have to have some, some kind of, uh, trust and association fee to maintain whatever is common.
Right.
Okay.
Number seven.
Um, E, the applicant shall maintain clear sight lines at the driveway entrance by maintaining any exiting vegetation at a height of one foot or less, and prohibit storage of objects therein. I didn't know about the one foot, I just assumed.
So typically, yeah, typically, it's like two and a half feet. Driver sits three and a half feet. So typically, it's like between two and a half feet, seven and a half feet. Um, it kind of gives you a, a window for a driver's sight line, so you can have a tree that's large and have overhangs.
Okay.
But you don't want to have stuff blocking with you.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
I think that makes better sense.
And I think that, uh, that needs to be part of your trust.
Part of the community association.
Yeah. So that they understand.
Well, the conditions that are here will be rolled in.
Okay. F, the approval decision and the amended minor stormwater management permit, appended, sorry, appended. I just said it wrong. It is appended. Um, and stormwater operation and maintenance manual shall be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds at the applicant's expense within fourteen days following the approval and expiration of the twenty-day appeal period, or the resolution of any appeal in favor of the board's decision. Okay. The applicant shall file with the planning board a certificate stating the date and approved decision as recorded and the book and page numbers within seven days of recording. Well, I, I know from experience that people will get the decisions, not you, but people will get the decision, and it'll tell them what to do when they put it in the drawer. Okay.
The, the date seemed a little tight, but Scott and I will stay.
Okay. G, the project shall adhere to applicable zoning bylaws, planning board rules and regulations, and any conditions included by the Board of Health, the Building Commissioner, and all applicable local and state environmental agencies. Oil applied, oil applied. H, subject to the conditions contained herein, the project shall be undertaken and operated in substantial performance with the approved plan, including but not limited to any accompanying submittals by the applicant as revised to the date hereof. The determination of substantial performance shall be made by the board in its sole discretion. Any material deviation shall require review by an approval of the board, i.e., through an amendment, uh, within approval or new site plan, special permit as appropriate. All right, the age restricted development. Second plan special permit granted here under applies only to the site. All work taken on the site and subsequent operations of the board shall be included with the terms of a within decision and shall be limited to the improvements shown on the approved plan. J, the within decision applies only to the requested age restricted development by plan special permit. Other permits or approvals required by zoning bylaw or from the town, county, general bylaws, if any, and from any other governmental boards, agencies, or bodies having jurisdiction, shall not be assumed or implied by the within decision, and the applicant shall be required to seek and obtain the same. The applicant is and shall be required to comply with all pertinent requirements of the ADA Act forty-two, uh, one thousand one hundred and one, Massachusetts State Building Code, seven eighty C and R, and the Architectural Access Board's rules and regulations by twenty-one C and R, all as amended and so far as the same applied to the project or any component of the site's redevelopment or renovation to be used. That's standard. Okay, okay. So during construction, renovation or redevelopment of the site as contemplated herein, the applicant shall conform to all local, state and federal laws regarding noise, vibration, dust and blocking of any roads. The applicant shall at all times use all reasonable means to minimize inconvenience to residents and businesses in the general area as that. I believe that's also stated. Yeah. And the board and the town's building commissioner. Do we have one? Checking. And their respective agents may enter onto view and inspect the site from time to time without notice so as to ensure compliance with the terms and conditions listed herein, such as applicable safety requirements as established by the applicant and/or. My. Her contractors. We don't want to.
We don't, yeah.
Enforcement authorities shall expressly be vested in the board but also in said building commissioner and in the town's books department if necessary or appropriate. Do some edits there. And the board hereby reserves its powers to modify or amend the terms and conditions of the within decision upon its own motion with consent from the applicant or on request by the applicant. The board further reserves its powers to amend the within decision without a new public hearing provided that the board finds such an amendment that's not significant to the public interest and that such amendment is not inconsistent with the purpose and intent of zoning bylaw or with the terms of, of the within decision. That's standard. O, the site plan special permit granted herein shall last two years from, this is oil plate as well, right? It'll last two years from date of issue, not including any such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal pursuant to Mass General Law forty-eight seventeen. If substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced except for good cause as determined in a public meeting with written consent of the board or in case of a permit for construction if the construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause as determined in a public meeting with written consent by the board. And that is, um, that's standard, that's happened, that's happened in the past as well. And that would be it. We would be able to on this date, August fourteenth, react to that. So what is the, uh, which is of importance?
Let's ask the applicant, do you find those conditions reasonable?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any questions, Tony? Are you good?
I am good.
Okay. Um. I'll entertain a motion of the decision as presented um, and allowing for amendments and edits to be sent to the board prior to, and, and also town council's review, prior to the signing by the board members. Okay, so second? Oh. Okay. Any other discussion? I mean, not stating, no, I'll take a roll call, low please. Carol Hawes, yes?
Robert Darian, yes. Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Tony?
Tony Lopez, yes.
And Laura Shepherd, yes. Good questions.
Thank you very much. Um, two quick things. One, you may be closing the hearing. But the other thing is, I appreciate Mr. Lopez is weighing in on this. But as far as on the decision, I'd like to give it to the, the board view as he wasn't a member of the board when we did the first presentation. I've touched base with legal counsel just to make certain of that. And I'm just a picky guy when it comes to regulations.
He did attend.
I'm.
He attended.
He attended, but he wasn't a member yet. He didn't get, um, he hasn't, hadn't been, uh,
Appointed.
Appointed as one of the one hundred old.
Yes.
Um, by a town clerk.
Right.
Prior to that time. So even though he's mullioned in, and I'm sure he has, um, I'd rather just have the four signatures just from a technicality. I don't want to have a loophole that someone could appeal by.
I mean, we're okay with that, Tony. We appreciate your input, but you won't have to sign the decision.
So, yeah, and we appreciate it as well, but just wanted to give it to the board. Thank you.
We appreciate that.
No problem.
What about, yeah, Ian?
I'm sorry, that was.
Please, let me, that's, that's where the edits.
Where the edits. We will get a final after, um, before it goes to town council and then after. Correct. Yeah. And do you all want to sign at this time? Okay, you're all, oh, you're going to be away.
I'm going to be gone for twenty, I won't be back.
You can get a, you can sign a blank page, you know, signature page.
No. So, okay. So what we've done in the past, and if it's okay with you, the board will take a vote to authorize the chairman to sign the decision for everyone who's voted.
Okay, as long as it lists before they're voted in favor, which Beth is already taking down, that, that's fine with that. But if that's, yes, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll entertain, I'll entertain that motion.
I move to let Lori.
Authorize the chair.
Authorize the chair to sign the decision.
On behalf of the board. Just a second. Okay, I'll have a roll call, low please.
Robert Darian, yes.
Carol Hawes, yes. And Laura Shepherd, yes. Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing on Pittsburgh Road Age Restricted Development Site Plan Review for a special permit at seven twenty-nine P M. Are you hearing that? The roll will vote.
Robert Darian, yes.
Carol Hawes, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Shepherd, yes.
Super. Thank you all for your time. Thank you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy anniversary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is the meeting adjourned?
The meeting is not adjourned, the public hearing is.
Okay, thank you.
We're not done yet. Okay, so next was at seven fifteen, but is Jonathan or Karen here?
Hi.
Hi, Karen.
Jonathan was out sick today.
Oh. Hope he feels better, so tell him I said so.
Me too.
All right, Karen, sorry to keep you waiting. You know, we just finished the hearing that we had, so.
No worries.
Okay, go ahead, report to us.
Okay, so we've been working diligently with the department head group. Um, we met, uh, two weeks ago on the thirty-first to go over the five districts that we had put into the compliance model. The way it worked out, the best, um, district is, um, the fourth district, which is, um, twenty, number twenty to number thirty-six on Main Street. So it basically goes from McDonald's to, uh, the river. So that last house before Ross is there. Problem with, the problem with that. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. I just want to get the map on.
Okay. Yeah, my computer's, my internet is not doing well. My camera won't show me.
The man includes twenty-two, then includes that house past Squaw Cook, uh, Rustlers. And.
Past Squaw.
So twenties McDonald's.
Yeah, eighteen's high school.
Eighteen's high school? Yeah, but, uh, they, uh, even, it's somewhere inside. Eighteen, eighteen is the Harbor Village.
Or is it not?
Oh, so this does not include Harbor Village.
No.
Just, um, can you, can you help? Cause then we're talking about McDonald's, um, the veterinarian, um, the pizza place. Eating on, E R S Black Hook. And then.
Does that include, uh, the old real estate office?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And if it goes to thirty-nine, it includes that house that was going to have the truck service that just renovated. That was just renovated and under agreement. I don't know what it's going to be. Um. So.
So this, so District Four, those lots works out to fifteen point nine units per acre and a total of a hundred and eighty-two units. And you need a hundred and seventy-eight, so it fits just perfect. The amount of open space is, um, seventy percent. And the problem with this district, which is a problem with any district that's in the aquifer protection district, is your bylaw only allows single family homes in the aquifer protection district. Also, these lots in District Four outline commercial district, which allows two families by special permit and then only single family by, right? So talking with, um, Dave at the Water Department, he's totally against changing the aquifer protection district to allow multifamily. I've asked questions of D H C D, or I mean, E O H L C. Um, and they didn't have an answer for me of how you deal with conflicting overlay districts. So we're starting to write the bylaw using the parameters that are in the compliance model, but we're going to have to figure out how to deal with this overlay district. I mean, obviously you already have multifamily that's in the aquifer district, but that was before that bylaw was passed. So that's where we are with that.
How, how are we going to be able to change that? I mean, I, I saw the, um, that I was quite interested in the sample bylaw that's under this part of our agenda for multifamily housing, which also fits into, um, the bylaw community thing they're, you know, doing here. Um.
The Water Department's against District Four?
Yes, because they're against changing the aquifer protection district from single family to allow multifamily. Cause then you have a, a bigger septic system and you could be contaminating the water. Um, so he's against that. That doesn't mean it, it can't necessarily be done. Um. Uh, if he got up at town meeting and was vocally opposed to it, I'm sure there's people that would follow him. Um, so obviously they passed the aquifer protection district for a reason, to protect our water supply. And you know that it goes all the way down one nineteen.
So every district that we saw.
The two, the two best districts, four and five, are in the aquifer protection district. District one, two and three are, well, District Three, the lot is way too big. Um, District Two and District One could be a possibility. But I know there's a lot of, um, wetlands and sheet runoff up on Wallace Hill Road. So they, there may not be, they may not be capturing all of the wetlands that are actually on the ground up there. Um, so it's really ultimately your decision. And we'll go with whichever district you think is the best. Um, District Three, I would not consider at all unless it was, um, broken down into a smaller lot. Um, District Two is just one single lot, which gives the perception that one person in town is going to have an advantage with, you know, they could sell it for a lot of money because a multifamily developer wants to go in there. Um, so it's, it's not wise to do one lot.
How big is that lot?
It's, hold on.
The road? What's that one? How, how big is that lot?
Uh, let's see. Two, two.
Two is twenty-one acres.
Twenty-one acres?
Yes.
I think, I think that, is, is there a hu, one house on that lot?
Yes, that's the, um, that's, um, Lou Kickless's lot that he sold. That District Two is private.
So why, why, why wouldn't we do that? You know, God's not making land anymore. So we only have what we have to work with.
Right.
So why can't you put so many, you don't have to put a whole hundred and eighty-seven, you know that. No, it's, it's a very expensive thing to develop too. And you're looking at septic and, and well. It still goes down to what is the Board of Health going to allow you to do.
It's feasible to do.
Right.
Excuse me. I mean, District Four is ideal because it's near Hanford.
You know, those are the thoughts here. Any big property within the suggestion. We already have zoning there in hand now. So they're entitled to that. And they have the, another option to do multifamily there with the overlay district.
Right.
So in my mind, that's an asset to appropriate, to have more options to what to do with their land.
But Karen's comment was, that wouldn't be fair because there's only one owner in the district. I don't, I don't see how that comes into play if we're trying to do something for the town.
Right, and.
I'm just saying that the public's perception would be.
Okay, so I don't even know what the owner is. But Karen, if we're trying to make something that's feasible that the Water Department is not going to have an issue with, and it's still, everything is related to the Board of Health, but having this district that is feasible helps us get the grant money, right?
Yes.
And puts us in, uh, good graces, if you will, with the state that we tried to do something. That makes more sense to me. I mean, that person may never develop it, but yet it's an option for someday. I mean, it's an option versus having to hear the Water Department talk about how bad it is.
And if you look at, uh, Districts one, two and three, uh, multifamily housing, they have a dramatic impact on those acres. Whereas people are more accustomed to seeing a lot of change and growth on District Four and Five. So why would we disturb, uh, you know, passive neighborhood and introduce an old, uh, high density project when we have these other options? And they actually have more positive components about them than taking a virtual hand or, or, uh, you know, disrupting a rural kind of environment. These are the ones of one, uh, one, one, three of all.
Robert, you're advocating more focus as District Four, but I'm more in favor of four and five. I think they have less of an impact.
I think they have less of an impact, and, uh, they have more resources. Um, and we're not.
Yeah, but those are the ones that the Water Department is gonna fight on. Do we have to go before town meeting?
Yes, yes.
On what it is. And the Water Department's gonna fight it because of the Aquifer Protection, right? So wanting things that are not in the Aquifer Protection.
Jessica, do you remember the conversation we had about that?
Um, I mean, yeah, I, I think you already touched on it, that the basic concern is potential for septic pollution into a groundwater drinking area, source, source area. So, I mean, I, I, I get both sides of, you know, one and two versus four and five. I'm torn also, um, but yeah, I mean, we're not having any luck figuring out, you know, which overlay district could supersede another. So that's, that's a challenge, and yeah, I, I don't really have any other answers either.
Ask about that section. I think it was you that brought up the, um, eastern section of Main Street, where the white is. Is that the western section?
Right.
Uh, west, sorry, yeah.
Western.
Yeah. And you, the potential for northern district out there.
Yeah, but we, I don't know exactly where the aquifier districts are.
Oh, yes. Yeah, but I thought, yeah, I, I thought it was, I thought it was a pink.
If we're, I certainly can't, we can't really know the aquifier. But, how much of it is impacted, you know what I mean, or would be impacted? So, in other words, if we have a minimal number of acres that we have to provide, and it's subject to some aquifier exposure, then we simply make it a bigger area. You, you know what I'm saying? So that we can still accommodate that, and the percentage of the multifamily. Right, exactly. Well, they won't let us keep it, so.
Just tell me color.
This is aquifer.
Anything in the blue line.
Anything that's in the R A District.
It's really good on this map, cause you don't have the Aquifer Protection.
The Aquifer Protection District is the same as the R A.
No.
So that's green?
No. R A is all green on this map that we have here.
Yes.
That's true, okay. Green is what? Residential A?
That's the Aquifer, cause it's residential Aquifer. R A. And you're required to have three acres, and then the R B is only two acres, cause it's outside of the Aquifer.
A pod is here. Saying it's the groundwater, it's the groundwater protection.
And then the groundwater, I believe, is the blue lines, where all the zone twos are for the, um, water wells.
I think we just talked about it here, westbound.
Yeah, I mean, that's all white. The white areas, the areas are A O K.
Yeah, the problem up on Bayberry Hill is water supply.
I think there, um, I did talk with David about this today, and I apologize, I don't remember the technical terms he was using, but there is some sort of like connection disperser thing he could put in, um, at the intersection of like Blood and, oh, this isn't my map, that's Beth's map. What is that? Elm Street? West Elm Street? Yeah, what's working. Um, so he was saying that that's feasible, so, um, one of those parcels, you can see at the terminus of Scales Lane, which isn't labeled, but it's not Saunders Road, but it's the other one coming off of Main Street.
Right.
The terminus of that, by that pond, that huge parcel, that's the golf course, for reference. That has some red splotches through it, but, I mean, everything sorted to the west of that, does have some feasibility to it, with the exception that, although it shows it here on this map, Blood Road is actually not a, of, it, it's, it's two dead-end streets. It doesn't actually connect.
It was discontinued years ago.
So I think that, I mean, an improvement could be made again, but, um, yeah, I, I don't think that area is completely out of the question of, of using that as a zoning district. But again, I mean, like Robert was saying, it's not super, you know, in the, the spirit of sort of stuff that's already built. But also, another argument could go, I'm really flip-flopping, sorry, guys. Another argument could be, you know, connectivity down to Fitchburg through Route thirteen, too. So, I mean, I know we're really focused on shooting out to Route three, but, um, you know, going down to Fitchburg and getting on Route two is an option as well, so. More food for thought.
What do we have on thirteen south? What parcels are?
Thirteen south?
Yeah, could we make, you know, south of your house?
Right. I thought that was a possible area too.
Yeah, cause you're almost looking at, you know, uh, Fitchburg, Monmouth, Townsend, like a.
That whole more communication area.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Mr. Therian, do you have town water where you are?
It's available. I still have well water.
But it's available there. I just can't remember how far the, the water line goes down thirteen.
I don't know, but, uh, I know that it's available right where Old City Road and Tyler Road and Fitchburg Road is. And beyond that, I don't think it goes beyond that, but it could be extended, maybe, you know, I don't think that's an issue. I just think.
Yeah, development on Mayport. You know, it would just be a cost factor.
That's right. So, uh, so, again, that's a possible area, and other developed areas where we are in West Townsend. And, again, I don't know if we have the, the capability to look at these. I mean, we have obvious aquifier things that are very determinate, and others that are more, less determinate. And, so, in that site, in the less determinate areas, we can make more available, more acreage available, so that the water and sewer consumption would be similar to what's already there. The big problem that I'm hearing is that the state is adamant about it. In other words, when I had suggested more acreage to reduce the density, okay, in other words, if we provided a bigger area, then the density would be low. And I got admonished for that, telling me that everyone has to allow up to fifteen units per acre. So that whole concept, when I shared with you.
Well, they're from the city.
The ones I shared with you, the different housing, kind of, uh, you know, the graphic about the different housing styles and formats that you could use, they shut that right down. And that's not, there's no reason for that. There's no reason, no justification for that. And the other thing I wanna tell the board is there, it's a lot of issues coming up here, and the state is being challenged from some of its stuff. So, my perspective, in terms of what we have to try to do, we should keep this focus to the minimum, because who knows what's gonna happen down the road. Uh, that's what I'm thinking. But, uh, so, a lot of these issues that we're facing, other communities are facing too. So, part of this may be modified dramatically. However, we don't know when and how that will happen, and I think our objective here is to come up with a sensible solution to address the physical parts of our town, particularly with aquifier prevent, you know, protection. And, um, the water supply, I don't know it's gonna be the major thing, because the town doesn't have the water, water resources. You can know we don't have a lot of wells. So, that could be, everybody's talking, we have to do this for the future, so. In the future, we will need more wells and more whatever. So, I, I really feel like, I, I wanna play this very conservatively. And, one of the concepts on District Four and Five is there's a lot of resources over there. And, uh, uh, and what I'm seeing with the aquifier, we're not right on it.
Karen, can I ask, to Robert's point? In M R P C, we have a number of similar towns, uh, small towns. How, how are they addressing this? Some, I know.
Not very easily. They're in the same situation.
Right. So I guess my question was, what, are you, are you seeing any positive things in the other towns that are similar, that that the towns that are alike can get together and, you know, put together something to take to the state and say, hey, look? I mean, obviously, it, it's apparent that some, most of the people in Boston that are in the State House that's doing this legislation, they're not dealing with wells and private sewerage.
Right.
Just to where they're in, and they've got a high density everywhere. And thinking that we can do that everywhere is not, it's not feasible.
Well, I, I can tell you, I, I, I've been saving a lot of audits coming from different towns here. And one of them is Arlington. And another one is adamant, refuses to participate, and is taking it to court, in other words. They're adamant, and they don't care about the grant. Um, I forgot the name of it, but I have them all on my portfolio. So what I'm seeing is a progression of towns that are starting to see the reality of what's happening here. And, and they, the, on the state level, they're, they are not, they, they will not move. They will not vary, modify, or make accommodation or an exception at all. And so then the question comes up, and this was passed without representation, and, and then, and then there was no public input before they made this, and it's all to benefit the M T A. So one of the towns is arguing, why have we been doing this for the benefit of the M T A? When it's ill-managed, it's and all these other things that they have. So, there's a lot of flack coming down, and so who knows how that's gonna play out. However, in terms of what I see, what I understand, when I originally thought of an overlay district, four and five, I thought it was a really good thing. We could have adapted use. We could have mixed here. It made the property owners a lot of options. They could go commercial, they could do whatever they want. We would accommodate what the state wanted, and then they turned around and said, no, you make that overlay district, every acre in that district has to be a minimum of fifteen units. And that blew my whole concept right out of the sky. So wherever we put it, the mandate, as it is now, means that density has to be available. So, if we're talking those kinds of densities, this aqua problem and the sewer problem is magnified, I don't know how many percent times.
But we're not able to do it.
I know. So, that's what I'm saying. They've created a.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we have any, like, abandoned old buildings that can be converted into multifamily units?
Well, there's some properties.
Probably.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, if, if there's a, I know West, I think West had builds, so they take it all their bills and they convert.
That's right.
Yeah, Apple's done that too. Leunster.
We have existing today in the town, others, some, like, beside the one that we talked to boys about, is there, like, maybe, up in the buildings, or something that we could maybe turn into some kind of multifamily, two or three?
Just as some of it. Going, um, remember where Bates Box was?
Yeah.
Yep. Then, across the street, where in Townsend Harbor, with the mill, it's a Hudson Mill. I mean, that could be a creative use. Do you, do you know what I mean? That could be.
Sorry, I spilled my water juice.
Huh?
Sorry, I spilled my water juice.
Oh, is it? Well, opposition is new, great opportunity for you, you know.
Oh, we have, no, we're small then. Doesn't necessarily. No, we have that.
Is the Squanacook School being used?
It's being used. Um, so, then in the center town, with the Dallas schools. It's quite a great acreage, yeah.
I think it's two and a half acres. He's got, they have a new septic design ready to go, and I'm gonna get a price, cause it's a different part. It's really a nightmare out there to try to develop stuff.
Well, that could be a mixed use overlay district. Particularly where we have the commuter transit thing. It's right in the center of the town.
So, it isn't, it isn't so much that we can't find parcels that we could group together with the total amount of acreage that they want us to have. It's more that, when we do this, we're gonna get a lot of flack at town, at town meeting. And if it doesn't pass, all of this is for nothing.
Right. But who's gonna pass a mandate of fifteen units per acre? Who's gonna do that?
Well, here's what's gonna happen. When we don't do it, it'll be automatically imposed by the state. Now, you have some option of putting some feedback into this and saying, I want it here, or I want it there, or I don't. And if you come up with your own plan, then they're gonna allow you to at least do the bylaw, okay?
I know.
But then, if not, they're just gonna mandate it.
I don't know about everybody here.
But the town can't afford to legally fight the state.
Um.
Tax, money wise, the town can't afford to fight the state. Unless, unless you're rich enough to do it for everybody.
Again, there's a point, there's a point where
Don't, isn't the first.
Where it's not the only job.
No, not. But aren't we just supposed to identify something to appease?
And the other thing.
Yes, that's what we're trying to do. What? The water.
Most of people, most of public at large, not even aware.
Most are.
Huh?
Most are.
No, most are.
No, they're not. No, they're not.
I think if the public at large was aware of how this came about and why it came about and the intensity that's being forced on. I mean.
It'd be a big black flag.
And I think that's, I'd rather.
Okay.
You just wanted to ask Karen to speak to our plan for fall town meeting?
Oh, plan for town, uh, fall town meeting, Karen?
Is that when you wanna try and pass this?
No, I, I guess you weren't aware. Uh, we had a discussion, I thought you were there at the staff meeting about fall town meeting, providing an update of.
Oh, right, 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 right. I'm sorry, Jonathan's the lead on this project, so
Okay.
I'm just filling in.
Yeah, so I thought a segue would be Robert's, uh, comment about the public awareness.
Right.
Fall town meeting is, is where we'd like to roll that out.
Right.
We can take it to the down and see how they feel about this.
And that's where that'll be public input then.
Well, you're gonna hear a lot.
Do you think that you, I, I am, I'm trepidatious to give a presentation at town meeting where the conversation just goes and goes for an hour and then you still have to do all the articles at town meeting? I think, um, if you start putting it on, I mean, you already have stuff on the website. But if you start now to publicize it, maybe have a public information meeting like in September or October.
I think, I think the townspeople have to know what's going on.
Oh, absolutely. But until you guys figure out what you wanna do, you can't be answering questions that people have. You know, if you don't all agree on, on what's gonna happen, then, you know, and then Dave at the Water Department will get up and, and say his piece, which I don't blame him, he's in charge of the water. Um, I mean, the state says you gotta do it no matter what. Don't worry about the water, don't worry about the septic, but as planning boards and planners, it's impossible to not take those things into consideration.
So a public forum, explaining what this is all, explaining that the town could forfeit all these resources, natural resources, and say to the town, what do you want us to do?
Well, okay.
No, that's great. You should go to the people and say, the, say, these are the four or five options and where do you think it's best? Given these, you know, factors.
That's just come to a, a bonus with, with the people that live here.
Yeah. Can we put something together with the Board of Selectmen, Conservation, Land Use Coordinator, Conservation and the Water Department to hold an informational session on the state mandate? Okay?
Maybe we do it at a, at a, a select board meeting, you know, 'cause more people watch that, right?
Sometimes. Uh, why don't, really, why don't we approach, or, you know, the T A's on vacation now, but, um, Jazz and, um, Jessica's on, I'm sure she'll be, and I'm sure Dave would, um, participate. But that these are, are concerns, yet we have to come up with something. So, and hold a public hearing of all those departments and what we're dealing with. What we've come up with, what, what is the, um, hurdles that we have to cross in order to appease the state?
I, I think we've done a lot of work on this, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we just took a lot of time and effort trying to come up with something that's work. And I want the town to know that we just haven't clocked over. But as a progress, as a work in progress, here's the, this is what we came up with. I would have been totally, totally for all this if they hadn't said to me that the fifteen unit is a minute and for every acre. What they were saying to me, every acre that we have has the potential of being fifteen units.
But not if they're denied water or sewer.
Um, can, can we as a planning board do a, an open letter to the Sentinel and express, you know, what we, I feel like that's, we talk about presenting a selected meeting with twenty viewers.
Right.
Yeah.
And might, we might have to communicate with the towns too.
I think it'd be more effective for us to take in some ways a PR position and just say.
You know, it's funny how, um, at the, uh, newspapers used to be at our meetings.
Right.
Not the public, but certainly at the Board of Selectmen. And you haven't seen them for a couple of years.
Yeah, I think, dare I suggest, um, we've sort of been, yeah, talking about more public transparency, education, informing, 'cause yeah, I mean, ninety-eight percent of the town has no idea that Planning Board exists, really. So, um, no offense, but that's just how it is, right? So I think using social media as, as a platform is really good. I mean, for my, for my town, I get all of the, the happenings through our town's Facebook page. So I think if, if we have a presence there, um, we, that is, that is a goal of the town to maybe not just post agendas, but post things like MBTA, the Open Space Plan. Come up with some sort of survey. So I think having an educational session, um, that, you know, maybe only a lots for a, a hard fifteen minutes of public input, public questions is a good idea. Um, but advertise that on a, through a platform where the majority of the town will see it. Um, so.
Any financial resources?
No. We don't have.
I think the best idea would be a, uh, some sort of a newspaper article on the predicament that's shared widely on social media, coordinated with the public forum as an action item.
I think it's a good idea. I think, um, I did one mailing a couple falls ago and I think to get every resident, just a one-page, black and white was like almost a thousand bucks. Um, and that was shared in the water bill, so that does not include envelopes or postage. So I, you know, unfortunately with the budget that our town is on, um, it's probably out of the question to do a mailing to everybody. Unfortunately, um.
It might be cheaper just to do a postcard with a QR code on it and a website, you know, put stuff on the website where, you know, it's separate from everything else.
Yeah.
Oh. Can we go into tax work? Cause you're getting mail addresses.
Not the assessors, but I get my tax bills by email. They sent, they mailed them out, but I also get an email.
Right.
You can subscribe to getting like email alerts.
Yeah.
But you, but you have, you have to personally opt in to get them.
Right.
So that's something, yeah, these are good ideas. So we can talk about this at the staff level and see sort of the best way for outreach. But I mean, I know separate from MBTA, the Open Space and Rec Plan, they got like two or three hundred people to take the public survey for that. So however that was, was shared with the public was a, was a good start. Um, so Carol, we can connect offline, I guess, for that and then maybe just start there. But I mean, the good thing is we have till the end of 2025, so we're not up against the count, the end of the calendar for this year. So.
So did you guys, are you guys participating in the CHAPA assistance? I see that on your agenda. So do they have any, um, helpful things for outreach?
Um, not that I've seen yet, but I can reach out. I also pulled up the initial PowerPoint presentation, um, to look at other, what other communities are the small adjacent or whatever we are. Um, so maybe it's just something as simple as emailing their land use people planners to see what they're proposing to do. I think that might be a, a smart start.
Yeah, we're giving a presentation to the Board of Selectmen in Ashby. We're having a public information session in, uh, September.
I think, I mean, what Robert was saying though, that's, you really have to, to speak to the people where it, where it will reach them. So if we do not adopt this, then we lose the, the significant sources of funding for our town. Where it's such a small town like this, we're not Somerville, we're not, you know, Medford, so we're not making millions off of taxes per year. So our, our sources of funding, if everyone doesn't like how the roads are done, or the, this one's flooding, this one's collapsing, then we even lose that source of funding. So to, so really speak, really speaking from the financial side of it, I think, um, will help sort of get the message through.
Yeah, and it's just, it's not just those three grants, Mass Works and those other two. It's also Green Communities Grant Funds, it's Housing Authority Money, it's, it's a whole range of things. On a lot of grant applications now, they ask you, are you in compliance with MBTA right now? And if you say no, you have points taken off your application. So it's really, you know, there, it's do or die for them. It's like, you must do this.
Either we have to accept it or we have to get other communities and have the legislature understand what the issues are and either make some concessions or change this. Uh, because obviously we have legislators that this all sounds like a good wholesome thing and I'm just gonna vote for it without even knowing what implications it makes. So the only real hope is to have other communities get to these legislatures and turn this around. Um, other than that, what we, I know that using this to compel us based on funding and, you know, we didn't, we didn't have any representation when they did this.
We could only do.
Right, and that's what everybody's saying. But we can do more and
Okay.
And like I said, I'm not opposed to having this happen, okay? And, but I did say, if we do something like this, let's make it the minimal possible. Because, uh, if we get more, dedicate more, more, yeah, overlay districts, uh, it doesn't help anything, it just compounds the problem. So, uh, I, I don't know, I, 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 I do want the townspeople to know what's going on and give them, give us some insight as how they want it. So do you wanna fight it, legislature, or do we just do the best we can? Uh, you know, they elected us and we're supposed to represent them. And, um, again, and I think we did a diligent job here, but.
I think we did too, and Robert, you did too, and I understand your frustration. So I'd like to move on for now, while we have something else we can do um, at this point and have it on the next agenda with an update of maybe what Jessica finds out and what's on her next steps.
Karen, could you also look at the edge of Route thirteen alongside Northburg?
Yes.
There's plenty of land there, see what happens there. Okay. Anything else, Karen?
No.
That's all right.
Can I answer? Yeah, yeah, well, uh, at what point are you gonna start drafting the bylaw? Karen?
Soon. I mean, it's, it's hard to do without, um,
What do you mean from?
Without a location. I mean, we haven't decided on the location yet, but we can start drafting it with the dimensions that we've used in the compliance model.
Okay. And this two point two, this is a sample bylaw? For multifamily regulations?
Yeah, if you recall, Jonathan provided those at the last staff meeting.
Um, okay.
For us to review. Do you remember, Karen?
Yeah, so the state model is more of a discussion than a bylaw. You know, it, it recommends a whole bunch of different things, but it's a really, it's very informational and it's a good, it's a good read.
I think you just again in any way, so this is that Article Four, Section four ten, multifamily overlay district?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, if all of us could take a look at this and maybe come back from some comments.
Yeah, I think, I need more time.
You already hate it?
Oh, yeah, I hate it.
You hate it?
Oh, yeah.
There's nothing we can adapt to in it?
I hate all of this.
Did you see the one I said?
Yeah, but the, all of this can't apply.
Yeah, they take in every possible situation in, in that whole document. That's why it's so big. They give examples and.
Is, is all of it necessary though? If you don't have institutional, I mean, it, most of this wouldn't apply to a small town. Right?
Right.
Okay. All right, um, we can discuss that a little further next time, see what you come up with. And three point one, planning board regulations. This, we finished twelve last time and so you, you gave, brought this up because this is our next section. Okay, um.
Didn't we stop at the assessive, uh, accessory use?
No, we finished, uh, one seventy-five dash twelve last, um, last.
Yeah, we finished twelve.
And this is now thirteen. Do you want Karen, now we're all set with this?
Yeah, Karen, um.
Yes.
We're done with two point two for now.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna hop off too. I gotta go put my kid to bed, but good to see everyone. I'll see you in a few weeks.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye.
Karen. Um. Can we go, can we go to, um, do, do you guys wanna do this tonight or do you wanna hold off? Do it at home and then bring your edits to the next meeting? Okay. Um, four point one, by, by law review committee, is that the, uh, correspondence? Yes, is that the, uh, forms that we all got and Carol, we said you had submitted?
Well, I didn't get a form, I guess.
That was the update that, um, Chubb gave at the beginning, the bylaw review committee, is that what you're from? Yeah, so that's all that.
I mean, I just, I got an email and I just responded to me.
Okay, I think it's, we'll see what happens.
I don't know, I don't know what we'll come up with or anything, so.
Okay, we'll see. Um, anyone have? Well, is anybody else on the committee wanna, on the planning board wanna, you know, bylaw committee? Okay, so hopefully. Well, then, then volunteer and see what happens. You have to put in a form, there's no, like, we're not voting somebody on.
It was an email that came out looking for volunteers.
Was it by law committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just responded, I didn't fill out the form, I just responded to the email.
Did you say you did?
Yeah, I did.
Followed it to me and I was on you.
So you can, you can do that, what it is is, um,
I can find it, yeah.
It's per CHAZ, it's being formed for the charter.
Right.
So if you look at the charter, it's going to say what the bylaw committee does.
In the chart.
In the chart. Okay, 'cause I don't know, I can't. In the Charter, okay, cause I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Do you want me to put it in?
Yes.
I think that.
Is there any link with the zoning board on this stuff?
Um, link, meaning, in the Charter, it talks about the difference between the zoning and the planning, and then this group has a discussion and decides what they, what they think, and then they report that to the Board of Selectmen.
And then, uh, so, everything goes to the Selectmen without interaction with the zoning board, right?
No, there's gonna be a committee that's gonna look.
Come on.
Yeah, it's of whoever, whoever the Charter.
Okay, okay, I got it, I got it.
It's something, whatever.
The Charter is underlying too, you can take a look at that.
They have a form that's going to be formed this, maybe, you know, just looking for volunteers.
People making all the notices for, um.
Absolutely.
Okay, yes, please.
Notice a public hearing, Town of Pepper, Planning Board. And, uh, you wanna break with the word of the general summary?
General summary is great.
Fair enough. Uh, public hearing on Monday, August twenty-first, twenty-three sixty PM. Uh, applicant for a special permit to allow the conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling.
Oh, I like that.
The applicant is Mary Desmond. The subject property is located at nine Proctor Road, Pepper. Submitted by Chair Al Hatton.
I think that's on the town's, I think that's right near the corner.
Oh, that's.
Proctor and, because the first couple of houses.
The first couple of houses.
Is Pearl.
Proctor, yeah, that cross from the high school, isn't that?
Yeah, yeah.
Those first couple of houses.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out which one of those houses was, was, couldn't be converted. They all.
Yeah, right, they're similar.
Doesn't look like they could be.
Big.
Big enough to be, yeah.
Check them out. Okay, next.
All right, Zoning Board of Appeals, Brockton, Massachusetts. Will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM at the Brockton Town Hall, second floor meeting room. To convene a hearing for the application of Gus G., Mayor, one thirty-five, Skyfield Drive, Brockton, Mass, for an appeal of the decision of the Building Commissioner regarding a noise disturbance at lot two-two-two dash thirty-nine. Fair enough, yeah, okay.
Is that the beginning of you seven thirty?
Yeah.
We have a central, we have a, and they said.
Oh, that's next, yeah.
And I said, oh, you can listen. But then you can hear the music.
That would be so wonderful, I would think, right?
Depends on the cost.
Right.
Like, yes, man.
That's what I read. I can't imagine that you've read that. It's so cool, or sarcastic, but, you know, so, but anything else would be worth coming.
The final money?
Okay.
Yeah, Town of Pepper, Office of the Planning Board, Public Hearing on August twenty-eighth, six oh five PM, Woodbury Town Hall, for review, uh, here and review a site plan approval application, uh, for Keating, PJ Keating, nine ninety-eight Reservoir Road, Woodbury. Materials are available for viewing at the town.
What, what is it for?
Uh, that's all the detail there is.
No, what the name is for?
Your site plan approval.
Maybe just for the storage. Sorry. But when in Pepper, uh, when is their hearing?
Twenty-first, Monday, twenty-first, next Monday.
Six one fifty, yeah, yes. When did you talk or should I go that way?
Yeah. Can, can you check that out?
Yeah, try and get information on the application.
Is that? Would be interesting.
Would be.
Um. Exploring River Access Workshop on Nashua and the City of Rivers.
Oh, yeah, there was, I did put the flyer there, you guys saw the flyer? Yeah, it looks, it's really immersive, I mean, it's like three days, I think, um, eight thirty to five PM on September sixth, um, eight thirty to five PM on September seventh, and eight thirty to twelve thirty on the eighth. Is that people day weekend?
No.
It's September seventh.
It's during the week.
Eight is seven on Friday. Yeah, so, that, uh, is basically an immersive workshop on river access planning, um, along the Nashua and the City of.
Like to have access so people can go on canoes and stuff like that?
Yeah, so you actually go on a canoe trip there, so. That's immersive.
She's all about canoes and rivers. Okay.
Four point four, entertaining monthly learning sessions. Yeah, that's the information in your.
Oh, yeah, I did see that.
If you wanna find out for that, um, the learning sessions are, the link is provided for you guys in the folder. That's the Citizens Housing Planning Association CHAPA, like Karen was referring to. So, the next, uh, monthly session, I think it's coming up in the next week. So I'll forward that to the Board if they want to sign up. They're different topics. Whatever, rather than say, um, all different aspects of the planning.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, right now, we're scheduled for August twenty-eighth, and we do have a public hearing at that meeting. And on September, I, I just wanted to notify the Board that I will not be available in September at all. Um, we have meetings on the eleventh, I don't want to be here on the eleventh. Twenty-third is a whole day for me, and, uh, actually, I'll be on a plane, I think, on the eleventh. The town meeting on the twenty-fifth.
I think I'll be available though.
Okay, on the eleventh.
So, Karen, you have to chair twice, chair.
Yep.
What's, what's the next meeting? September what?
Yeah, Carol's not here and I'm not here. Is there a hearing there? Is there a hearing at night? No, okay.
As long as Tony and Michael can make it, we'll have four of them.
Yeah. Uh.
On May eleven.
Robert and Tony and Michael would be an associate if he could. So you would, you have a forum with Tony. You're a five.
So, is that one after September is?
The twenty-fifth.
That's the only one in September, the eleventh.
No, and the twenty-fifth is what's booked right now, there's no public hearing for that yet, right? Correct.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah. What does that tell?
But you're also unavailable on the coming day, right?
Absolutely, I'm not available. Oh, thank you. And Carol can share.
Yeah, I'll be watching too.
Um. Oh, not to. What does that tell her look like?
Uh, the sixteenth and the thirtieth, we just want to stay on the ninth, third, so.
What's the sixteen and the thirtieth?
So the twenty-fifth is definitely on September.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth is September. Oh, nice.
Yeah, I'm impressed.
Yeah, please. Um.
I'll be.
Why don't we change things up a little then? If we can? Um. Can we hold more in October? Like, can we go to October second and not the twenty-fifth? Or not?
Oh, you mean not September twenty-fifth?
No, I have for, for the sixteenth and the thirtieth, where does the twenty-fifth come in?
What, September?
September twenty-fifth.
You wanna move September?
Are you here?
I'm not here.
He's not here, and I'm not here. Okay, so there we go, so just September twenty-fifth, cancel September twenty-fifth and move it to October second. Yeah, yeah, okay, does that work?
Sure.
Okay. Most likely, yeah. I can double check if you can. Actually, they.
All right, so it's not.
And you're not here on the eleventh. And I'm not here on the eleventh.
So, that counts.
Well, my. Can we cancel September?
Hi.
I don't mind, kind of good, but you guys aren't.
I mean, if you have stuff that has to be taken care of, then Robert, Andrew and Tony could meet. Yeah, um, so they're in a hearing, so.
I'm going the week of the twenty-second, you know, too.
That's okay, I'm not hitting. I'm not hitting, but I could do, but if we, if we needed to have three meetings, okay? We could do the second, sixteenth, I may or may not be here on that day. Yeah, I think I am on that day, gone on the eighteenth. So, um, second, sixteenth and thirtieth. Sure. We could get a lot done in October after taking a rest in September. Why don't you, you can book the eleventh for September, which again, I, I think it's terrible to have meetings that's nine eleven, but, so cancel it. Uh, to you.
Uh, I guess you probably don't know if there needs to be things done on that.
Right now, there are no hearings on that date, so, and if there were.
Really enough to know?
The only, the only thing that would come in would be an A and R application that would need to be acted on within twenty-one days. So at this point, I think, you know, it's probably safe, uh, maybe we could leave it as a meeting.
Why don't you leave it as a holder, okay? And then if something pressing comes, address it that night, you won't have a full board, but you'll have Roberts here on the eleventh, right?
Yes.
Okay, just check in with Tony and Michael. Okay, make sure that you have a forum named Free A and R. Right, yeah, okay, and then, um. Twenty-fifth is canceled, and then we have three meetings in October. I, I think you all were, you're indulgent in collaboration on that.
Um. How, how are we gonna notify the public? You know, can't, do we have timeframe or, we have to probably do something with that?
Can you report to the Board before Jessica finds out what might be an option, and also talk with the TA and regarding the Board of Selectmen's preparation? I really think we should have water and land use in that presentation to answer any questions. And, or.
Gotta come up, right.
Maybe get a list of stuff, points that you want the public to know when we find out how to get, if you get the contact for the paper, or try to put something together for the paper. If you guys decide you wanna survey, you need the questions for the survey, which is factual, do you agree, do you disagree? Okay, so do you have, this is what's going to happen, how do you feel? And just, I mean, just options, you can't have something where they're gonna write essays, okay? Because people won't do that, so it'll have to be in a bullet form, and then no insert.
Right, I think it's a good idea, maybe you could do a survey and then announce a presentation with, based on the results of the survey.
Yeah, and Jessica's gonna work on that, from what she said, she's gonna check that out.
That's all, she would, yeah.
That'll be a big deal.
And definitely, do we have a date for the meeting?
The annual meeting?
Oh, a special meeting?
A special fall time meeting? You do, but I can't remember what it is, I'm sorry. Um, there is a date set, I believe, for fall time meeting. I can find out with November, December, July, I don't remember.
Okay, can you let us know? Because then, um, one of our October meetings I think will be designated to doing that, to taking care of that, getting that information out before the special meeting.
And that's one way that we get a forum, that's a meeting, so, you know, that troubles, okay?
Yeah, well, not. Okay, um.
Do what?
I think the fall time meeting does make sense for a presentation. You could, you could get support.
Last problem. Entertain the motion. Adjourn at eight thirty-eight.
It's so weird. Maybe we can credit, re-credit catch.
All right, uh. Can I vote for adjourned meeting at eight thirty-seven? It's been motioned and seconded.
I see.
No, no, it's been motioned and seconded, I just need a vote.
In favor, yes.
Your name?
Robert Terry.
Yeah, it's for you, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much, everybody.